Good evening, everyone. This is the March 1, 2021, meeting of the Astoria City Council. We're starting 15 minutes early to have a brief executive session. We have the full city council is present and we will now adjourn into executive session. For those of you who are watching that are not part of the executive session, we're going to ask you to sign off. If you don't sign off, we'll sign you off. And then immediately just sign back in in about a minute. And we'll just hold you and we'll admit you once the city council meeting proper starts at about 7:00 o'clock. So if you can get off now and then sign back in in a minute and we'll just wait to admit you until 7:00. Thank you. Okay, it looks like 7:00. We have returned a few minutes ago from executive session and are resuming the city council meeting of Monday, March 1, 2021. And we can go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Counselor Brownson.
Here.
Counselor Rocka.
Here.
Counselor Herman.
Here.
Counselor Hilton.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here. As noted, our first item was an executive session just completed regarding collective bargaining agreements with the chauffeurs, Teamsters, and helpers, Local 58, Public Works, and Parks and General Employees, as well as a salary resolution. And the next item on the agenda tonight is the presentation of the Marina and Company financial statement audit for the city.
So Mayor and Council, we have Tanya Moffett of Marina and Associates. And Susan, did you want to do a brief intro, Ms. Brooks, before we turn it over to Ms. Moffett?
I'm delighted to introduce Tanya Moffett. She's our partner in charge of our audit and they have been providing our audit services for the last three years. And we look forward to her presentation of our fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, as they stated, I am Tanya Moffett and I am the partner with Marina and Company on the City of Astoria's audit as well as the Astoria Urban Renewal Agency. I'm here to present the June 30, 2020 audits for the city as well as the Urban Renewal Agency. They both had an unmodified or a clean opinion. That is the highest level of a financial statement opinion that we are allowed to give on a financial statement. Our opinion is limited to the basic financial statements and we applied limited procedures to the management discussion and analysis. One of my favorite parts of a city's financial statements is actually the management discussion and analysis. That part has two years' worth of information and so you can go in and look at what the city was doing last year compared to this year. It talks about some of those differences and variances and changes. It's a really good place to go and look at the high level, what changes have happened within the organization. We also performed a single audit of federal awards expended by the city. And a single audit occurs when the city receives over $750,000 of federal funds. I'm happy to report that we had a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, on the single audit as well. The major program that we audited was the ODOT Federal Highway Planning and Construction for the Waterfront Bridge project as well as OR 2020's sidewalk. That total was, by itself, was $4.9 million and the total schedule of expenditures of federal awards was 5.1 million, almost 5.2 million. So I'm happy to report that we did not have any findings on the single audit either. We also are required by Oregon State Legislature to look at a few items that are not necessarily financial related. Some of those things include things like Oregon public purchasing. So we looked to ensure that when the city goes out for a contract, that everybody has an equal opportunity to bid, that it's published in the local newspaper, that those selected have insurance that it covers the city. So we go in and do a sample basis on some of these items that the Oregon State Legislature wants Oregon municipal auditors to look at. And I'm happy to report that we only had one item that we noted, and that was that the waterfront bridge replacement project had a negative fund balance at the end of the year. And that is a timing difference. So it means that there was more spent than was received during the year. And so that's just a timing difference. And that was a little bit over $2,000. There's nothing wrong with that. I just have to bring it to your attention. So those are, that's the only item that we noted while we were doing the audit for the city. This year was a very unique year in the fact that we did the audit 100% remotely. I have to commend city staff, especially Ms. Brooks, as well as her team and other departments as well, because we don't just only communicate with the finance department. But everybody got us everything in a timely manner when we asked for stuff. It definitely was a new experience for all of us and I appreciate everybody working hard through this. It includes city manager all the way down to all the different departments. So we have appreciated the opportunity working for you. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moffett. Always great to get a clean audit. Any questions or comments from the council?
No, just I appreciate our finance director. She does an excellent job.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I, you know, this is a, once again, a good outcome on the audit. And, you know, every, every year I've been on the council, that's the way it's been. And so good, really, really great work from Susan Brooks and, and like you said, her team. I did want to note, when I was looking at the management's discussion analysis and the financial highlights, there may be some, oh, things that have changed from, from year to year that, you know, some, some, some expenses from one, from previous year kind of end up on this year because of union negotiations and whatnot. But I think it's important to note that it shows that governor, governmental revenues increased by 0.3% and that business type activities revenues increased by 1.1%. And you can contrast that with the overall, with the city expenses for both funds were at 9.2% of an increase. So it just shows that we, we're losing ground and that this isn't unusual. And it's one of the reasons that cities are having a hard time keeping up with things because it's hard to get revenues to match expenses over time because of limitations, particularly with property taxes. So I just wanted to note that. But again, thanks for all the really good work and the clean bill of health.
I'll just add my appreciation, appreciation to Ms. Brooks and her team for another job very well done. Thank you.
Clean audit's a great thing. Thank you very much. Great work, you guys. Thank you so much, Ms. Brooks and your staff, and thank you, Ms. Moffett.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. Okay, next on the agenda is reports of counselors. I'll start to my right with Counselor Hilton.
Here's my report for the last couple of weeks. On Saturday, February 20th, the coastal rain sank on the Tillamook Bay bar. Two men lost their lives and two men were saved. That boat was from Warrington and that affects our community a great deal. And the Coast Guard did a heck of a job in rescuing and recovering. It was a, it was a difficult time for a lot of people in our community and it, it still is today. So I just wanted to make note of that. There was a slide last Monday out on Old Highway 30. It came down from Blue Ridge across the old highway. I contacted property owner Cheryl Mattson and I was encouraged to do the best I could. So I reached out to Susan Bonamici, state representative, and Ally at her office, got in touch with me and then got in touch with Brett and they did an outstanding job so far to help the questions that Ms. Mattson had and Mr. Mattson. So we did that. I think that's pretty good for now. Just to finish it with my constituents again, they were worried about the cleanup and the sticks and the trees and all that kind of stuff, the typical things that go along with the silver thaw. So I met with Chief Spalding last Monday also, and I did the simulator at the Astoria Police Department. And that was, that was very, very encouraging and it was a very enlightening experience. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Herman.
I attended a suite event at the fire department last week at which Astoria resident John Willis wanted to show his thanks to the department for saving his house and his dog Orville from a fire that likely would have destroyed his house. So what John did, he made a beautiful painting of a firefighter with his house behind it. And it was pretty cool in that firefighters just happened to be returning from another call, were going by John's house, noticed his house was on fire. And of course, they stopped to extinguish that blaze. And if they hadn't been right on top of it as they were, the house probably would have sustained much more damage. So needless to say, John was extremely grateful. And like Counselor Hilton, I was able to participate in the simulated use of force training for the police department along with Counselor Rocka and city manager Estes at the same time as me. And like Counselor Hilton said, it was very eye-opening and informative. Sergeant Chris McNary led the training. He did an excellent job walking us through various scenarios, police encounters, some on a daily basis. And I was just nervous sitting there watching them, even though it was a simulated training, my adrenaline was definitely flowing. So I'm really grateful to our police department and glad that I never had a job that required me to make such split-second decisions that my life might have depended on. So thank you, Chief Spalding, for inviting the council to take part in the training. That's it.
Thanks, Counselor Herman. Counselor Brownson.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. I, I on the simulator. That was really, definitely an eye-opening experience. I think, I agree that Sergeant McNary did a great job going through all the detail of what the modern police officer has to know to be out on the job, the restrictions, the constraints, all of that. And, you know, if, if people knew what they, the training that these guys went through and go through on a regular basis, I think they would have a really good appreciation of our, our police force and who they are and what they're doing. So I really appreciated the opportunity and look forward to more. Also participated, we all did, in a joint work session with Planning Commission, working on housing issues and whatnot, helped create some guidance for future planning. And I think it was really a great session for us as well. So that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Counselor Rocka.
You are muted.
There, now we got it. It seems like it's been a really busy couple of weeks, but I kind of narrowed down the things I would mention to more or less the same things my colleagues have mentioned. The fire department presentation was interesting in that, you know, we, we hear about a fire, we watch the coverage, we, we see the immediate aftermath, but often don't hear about what happens in the long term. And that was the thing that artist John Willis brought to it. And I think much to the appreciation of the fire department because he, he pointed out how saving his house and saving his dog, which the fire department also did in that case, had really been a life-changing experience for him and made a huge difference in his life. And that's something we don't always hear in the follow-up. The firearms simulator was fascinating and it made me appreciate the attention that our police force gives to limiting the use of force when they are out doing their jobs and also to the challenges involved in doing that. I guess the other two things I'd mention is that I appreciated the joint meeting with the Planning Commission and I think it may have set the stage for us to come up with some really effective changes to improve our housing supply. I hope that's the result. And finally, I'd just like to say hats off to the Fisher Poets, who managed to have an engaging and entertaining festival, even though they had to do it on Zoom this year. So job well done.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll just say ditto to my colleagues' events I participated in as well. And I'll just add, it was a pleasure to attend a ribbon cutting for a new business a couple days ago, the Sea Crab House, which is the restaurant that has taken up residence at the former location of Baked Alaska. So it's great to see gutsy business owners getting into it, you know, while we're still under some pandemic restrictions. That's a wonderful thing to see. And finally, I'll add on the, on the slide that Counselor Hilton mentioned, and thanks to the Public Works Department for getting out there and doing, doing everything they could to take some mitigating measures while we waited for the Department of Labor to do their job of actually removing the slide. So I'll ask you if there are changes to the agenda. I know that we're going to add the three items we already discussed at the end of the, the meeting. Anything else?
So for the regular session, we will add an item 8G, which is consideration of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Astoria and the Teamsters, Local 58, and the Public Works Union. And then also item 8H, a collective bargaining agreement between the Teamsters Parks General Collective Bargaining Unit in the city. And then an item 8I, a commensurate salary resolution.
Great, thank you. Consent calendar. Items on a consent calendar are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests to have an item considered separately. Members of the public may request to have an item considered or removed from the consent calendar by contacting the city manager prior to 1700 on the day of a meeting. That's 5:00 PM for everyone else. Did anyone from the public contact you?
No citizen requests.
Any, any counselors wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? In that case, could we have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I will move that we approve the consent calendar.
Oh, second.
Roll call. Counselor Hilton.
Aye.
Counselor Herman.
Aye.
Counselor Rocka.
Aye.
Counselor Brownson.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Regular agenda items are open for public comment following deliberation by the council. If any member of the public present wishes to comment, please raise your hand and we'll invite you to the podium and give your name and address and you'll have three minutes to speak. Any members participating virtually, use the raise hand function on your Zoom. Click on that and you'll be recognized to speak for three minutes after giving your name and address. Item 6A is, rather, 8A, sorry. 8A is consideration of River Barrel Brewing Enterprise Zone application.
So at a work session, which was held on February 10th, this is a joint work session between all the entities of the Clatsop County Enterprise Zone. We had representatives from Bowie Beer Company, which talked about a Clatsop County Enterprise Zone application. The Enterprise Zone manager, Kevin Leahy, also spoke at that work session. And it was noted that Bowie wished to secure approval for a five-year extended enterprise zone abatement as was provided for in state law. So the application was submitted by River Barrel Brewing, which is the name of the company which has the ownership of Bowie Beer Company. And that has been processed by the Enterprise Zone manager. With the aid of tax incentives from the four enterprise zone sponsors, River Barrel Brewing intends to invest approximately $8,75,000 by expanding their campus along the waterfront. And just to recall, the four entities of the Enterprise Zone are the City of Astoria, City of Warrington, Port of Astoria, and Clatsop County. So included in the packet is a draft agreement for the extended enterprise tax abatement. And as noted in the agreement, to receive the proposed tax abatement, River Barrel would need to comply with the minimum facility investments and the minimum employee wage requirements, as noted. And the agreement further provides that the Clatsop County Enterprise Zone jurisdictions would approve a total five-year tax abatement on new investments which were made to the property. We have Dave Cronin of Bowie Beer Company and Enterprise Zone manager Kevin Leahy on the meeting tonight to be able to answer any specific questions above and beyond which were presented at the earlier work session. So it should be noted that the applicant's business is included in the Advanced Astoria Economic Development Strategy under the Craft Beverage and Fermentation Cluster. Tonight, it's recommended that council approve the Extended Enterprise Zone Tax Abatement Agreement with River Barrel Brewing as presented and then separately approve the accompanying resolution.
Great, thanks for that introduction. Thought the last presentation at our last meeting was very thorough, answered all my questions. Do any of the counselors have additional questions or comments or questions of either Mr., either Kevin or, or Dave Cronin?
And Mayor, I would note that we also have Melanie Olson from Business Oregon on the meeting as well.
Great, thank you. Any counselor discussion or questions? Okay, I do see, I have someone from the public who has a hand raised. It's like the last name is O-R-A-K. We can unmute you if you'd like to speak to this matter.
I apologize. This is not the matter I wanted to speak on.
Okay, we'll just, we'll lower your hand and then just, we have general comment at the end of the meeting or if there's a subsequent agenda item, just raise your hand at that time.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate all the, the work that's gone into this from Cedar SBDC, Mr. Leahy, and also Melanie Olson, Dave Cronin, and the staff. So I personally, I'll be voting in the affirmative. If no one has any other comments or questions, then let's have a motion.
I'll move that we approve the Extended Enterprise Zone Tax Abatement Agreement with River Barrel Brewing as presented and also approve the accompanying resolution.
Second that. Yeah, so just, we have to do it as two separate motions. So we'll just have the application, we'll cut, we'll cut off what you just moved right before resolution.
All right.
We have a second.
I will sec, yes, I will second the Enterprise Zone Tax Abatement Agreement with River.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now may we have the second motion.
I move that we approve the resolution to support the Extended Enterprise Zone Tax Abatement Agreement.
I'll second. All in, wait, this one's a roll call. Roll call, please. Counselor Brownson.
Aye.
Counselor Rocka.
Aye.
Counselor Herman.
Aye.
Counselor Hilton.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. And on, I guess on to the other jurisdictions next after, after tonight. Next item on the agenda is item 8B, consideration of the SDYB OpCo Enterprise Zone application.
So also at the February 10th joint work session, we had representatives of Clatsop Economic Development Resources, Kevin Leahy, as well as Tom Wortman of SDBY OpCo, representing that group, speaking to an enterprise zone application, which has been filed to do also secure a five-year extended enterprise zone based abatement. So the application submitted by SDYB OpCo is a joint venture of Bornstein Seafoods, the Schooler Corporation, De Yang Seafood. And with the aid of tax incentives from the enterprise zone sponsors, SDYB OpCo is intending to invest approximately $10 million by constructing a new facility over in Warrington. So included in the packet is the draft agreement for the enterprise zone tax abatement by the four Clatsop County Enterprise Zone sponsors and SDYB OpCo. Should note that there is not a resolution included with this application because that would be approved by the City of Warrington since this application is in that jurisdiction. So in the agreement, it's noted that to receive the proposed abatement, SDYB OpCo will need to comply with the minimum facility investments and minimum employee wage requirements, as noted. And then the agreement further provides that the Clatsop County Enterprise Zone jurisdictions would approve a five-year abatement on new investments made on the property. So we have Tom Wortman of SDYB OpCo. I'm here tonight to answering questions along with Kevin Leahy and Melanie Olson of Business Oregon. So it should be noted that while this project is not within the Astoria city limits, the applicant's business would be included in our Advanced Astoria Economic Development Strategy under the Seafood Processing Cluster. And what should be noted here is two of the partners associated with this application, Bornstein Seafoods and De Yang Seafood, have processing operations within the city limits of Astoria and would be users of this facility. So there's a connectivity there to our economic development strategy. It's recommended tonight that the council approve the Extended Enterprise Zone Tax Abatement Agreement with SDYB OpCo as presented.
Again, I think the presentation at the last meeting by Mr. Wortman and others was very thorough. I don't have any more questions. I'll just make the comment, I do think it's terrific that our local fishing industry and the byproduct of our local fishermen's catch will be processed and utilized right here in the local, in the local area. That's a great thing. Any other comments or questions from council?
I would just say there's benefit here for the port as well, so it's, it's kind of good all around.
Are there any comments from members of the public?
Well, I will move that we approve the Extended Enterprise Zone Tax Abatement Agreement with SDYB OpCo as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations all. That was easy. And now you're off to the next jurisdiction. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Item 8C is the sewer video inspection equipment replacement authorization to purchase.
So public works staff utilize a pipe video inspection equipment and, which is included in what we recall or refer to as our sewer van. And we use this on a regular basis to assess pipe condition in our sanitary and storm sewer systems. The sewer van is an essential tool for both routine and emergency repairs and replacement of infrastructure. Now, the current sewer van was purchased new in 2006 and much of the equipment is well past its end of service life and it's causing frequent maintenance and service outages. The vehicle that houses the equipment and serves as a mobile inspection office is in great condition and can remain in service. However, we are looking to replace the equipment inside of it. And the total estimated cost of the equipment replacement is $120,224. This was budgeted in the Public Works Improvement Fund for this current fiscal year. In order to streamline the procurement process, it's recommended purchasing In order to streamline the procurement process, it's recommended purchasing equipment through a cooperative purchasing agreement as permitted in Section 1.967E of our city code. As a member of the Houston Galveston Area Council, we're able to secure this equipment through a cooperative agreement. The city would need to advertise our intent to utilize an interstate cooperative purchasing contract per Oregon revised statutes. And this requires that, if authorized, seven-day public notice will be provided and allows comments to be submitted to the city. If no comments affecting the procurement process are received during the notice period, the city will be able to move forward with the purchase. So tonight, it is recommended that the city council authorize staff to purchase replacement equipment for the sewer van from QUES in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars, under the process noted in the memo.
Okay, any comments?
Well, I just, it looks pretty straightforward and, and again, it was budgeted for and it's something that we need, so I think it's interesting, I'm going to read up a little bit more on this, sort of, the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Agreement. I think that's interesting. I'm assuming that just gets us a little bit better deal.
That's right. We've actually purchased other equipment through HGAC in, in past years, as they are able to negotiate, I'm going to call it essentially a bulk price. But there's been other equipment that we've purchased over, over the years through this, through this cooperative process.
I guess my question out of this is, does this, you know, whenever we can, we like to purchase locally or in-state? Does this, is there, is there any consideration, is there any in-state services that can offer the same sort of a deal? I'm assuming not.
I'm going to ask Mr. Harrington if, provide some information on that question.
Yes, I don't have an exact answer for that, I assume not, since we do spend a lot of time shopping for the best price. I know Nathan Crater's online, if he has an answer to that, I'll let him answer.
Sure, Jeff. The, the sewer inspection business is highly specialized. There are only a couple different companies throughout the United States that, that provide that type of equipment. I'm not aware of a local provider, however, that said, that, you know, this retrofit, if approved, will happen in, I believe, Boring, Oregon. So these, they do have a presence in Oregon, Ques does, and the folks that would be servicing our van. So while it is based out of Florida, they do have a local presence.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public?
Well, I would like to make a mo, if it's, can I make a motion at this point?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we authorize staff to purchase replacement equipment for the sewer van from QUES in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Moving on to Item 8D, which is an authorization to solicit proposals for the automated meter reading project.
The city's current meter readings, infrastructure requires a manual process. And in downtown Astoria, where meter access is challenging, we utilize something which is a remote reading unit that allows the meter reader to view consumption from an easily, easily accessible location like a storefront. These remote units and similar technology are no longer supported, and getting parts and replacement stock has become difficult. So after research and evaluation, our public works staff determined that migration to an automated meter reading system would be the most beneficial in the locations that are challenging to access. This terminate, term, technology allows a mobile mounted receiver to collect consumption data as the vehicle drives through an area. The public staff have recommended replacement of the meters of downtown first, as a pilot project, one hundred and thirty-five total, as well as large commercial meters of forty-seven total. And this would be a first phase that could include replacement of all residential meters as a second phase, which would be approximately three thousand nine hundred and nineteen meters as a second phase. So the automated meter reading technology has a number of additional benefits, which could include leak detection, backflow detection, detailed consumption of information, and allows for billing flexibility. Something just to note, you know, many folks know that my family is down in Texas. During the, the last ice storm and snowstorm they had last month, the city where my mother lives in, they have this technology in her town, and they were able to determine that there was a break in her sprinkler system in her yard, and was able to report that to us to be able to get that fixed. So that's the type of, of technology that becomes available with this, with, with this type of, of system. So this project is also listed in the Draft Water System Master Plan as a high priority project due to the multiple benefits of implementation. Staff have prepared a request proposal for the project, and implementation of the total project will be around approximately one million five hundred thousand dollars. However, again, this first phase is only estimated at one hundred twenty-five thousand and will meet our immediate needs. Funding for a Phase One project is available in the Public Works Improvement Fund, and the city staff will be looking into loans and grant opportunities to potentially assist with a Phase Two project. Once proposals have been evaluated, we will be bringing that back to city council to authorize award of a goods and services contract at a later meeting. It's recommended that council authorize staff to solicit proposals for the Automated Meter Reading System project. And this will kick us off on Phase One. I'm going to ask if Mr. Harrington or Mr. Crater have any additional information they want to provide.
No additional information, but be happy to answer any questions that pop up.
I will, I will mention that it did say in the memo that if we, if we didn't get these meters replaced, that we'd have to do confined space entries in a lot of areas to get into the, where the meters are below the sidewalks.
So what, do we have any estimate on the man hour savings of these automated systems? And I'm, I'm not asking you that to see how many FTEI can harvest from your department or Mr. Estes can, but I know you're short staff, so I'm just wondering, is this going to assist by freeing up some man hours for other priorities?
Well, currently, the meters are read by, by meter readers, a private company. If we eventually replaced all this, all the meters with automated meters, we wouldn't need that service anymore, for the most part. There are, there are issues associated with that. If your, if your meters aren't visited periodically, you can lose track of them, they get covered up. So we, we have to do some kind of maintenance still, but that's in the Phase Two when we look at residential, that'll be a little more complicated.
Okay, so it could potentially free up some dollars that are being spent on contractor or meter readers at this time?
It, it could. There, there are some, you know, costs, costs associated with the automatic meters too.
Mr. Harrington, is it correct that the City of Warrenton is moving to this system and received a grant for this project type of work?
Yes, that's true, they did. Yeah, and we've been talking to them about, about how it's working out for them.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I, I think part of this too is, we have, just, it's, again, it's infrastructure, we have a lot of old meters out there, and probably it's just time to get these things replaced as well. Is that correct?
That's absolutely true. And as, as meters wear out and start to fail, they, they read low, so we lose revenue from that, from an old meter. So they'll be more accurate in this case.
All right, in that case, could we have a motion?
I will move that council authorize staff to solicit proposals for the Automated Meter Reading System project.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is our city council goals for 2021 through 23.
So the city council held a set of goal-setting work sessions in February. The first one included discussion and dialogue from city staff with regards to the goals and objectives that they hoped to achieve over this next fiscal year, which begins on July 1st. And the second goal-setting work session was facilitated by Wes Hare, who has assisted the Astoria City Council for many years in their goal-setting process. What is presented to you tonight is the draft set of goals that were produced at the goal-setting work session. It's typical for the goals to be presented as a, an agenda item on the city council agenda, and then followed up later on for any final discussion and ultimate adoption. There is one goal for the library that will be developed after a city council work session, which will be held on April 17th with regards to the library. And this will include a discussion from Mr. Pearson, our library director, myself, and also David Warwick, who is the architect with Hennaberry, Eddie and Associates, who has been, services have been secured by the city for the library project. And part of that discussion will be following up with the council's desire to look at a first staged part of a remodel project and looking at what can be accomplished during that point in time. And the council will be able to finesse their, their goal language at the April 7th work session. So this is presented tonight, ultimately for just discussion and any, any dialogue. These are the city council's goals, and, and Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to facilitate that.
Okay, great, and thanks, Mr. Estes. I think your draft captured our discussions very well. I'll note that our vision statement remains the same vision statement adopted by the previous council with the addition of some language from, from our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Resolution from late last year. And we have individual, for those watching who haven't had a chance to go through the packet, we have goals regarding homelessness, housing supply, infrastructure sustainability, disaster resilience, public safety and quality of life. As Mr. Estes noted, a library goal to be developed after further work in April, and the five-year economic development strategy. And specifically on the housing, we, we mentioned the redevelopment of Heritage Square as, as a specific project we want to focus on in the near term to include work, a workforce housing component. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any discussion on the draft language.
I agree that staff did a really good job of taking our discussion and pulling it together into, into the goals that we have in this draft, and also to include some specific concerns that various members of the council had in incorporating those in the goals. So I like, I like what, what we've come up with here, and, you know, I hope we can do a little progress report on them periodically during the course of the year or two, to make sure that they're not just goals on paper, but that we are taking action on each of them.
I'll say, yeah, I agree with what Counselor Rocka said about staff getting our language into the draft of the goals. I feel really good about them, particularly our work we did at the work session with the Planning Commission on housing, and that is incorporated into one of our goals, as well as work with the Homelessness Solutions Task Force. And we do have a meeting coming up this Thursday, I believe, at which I believe Chiefs probably may be talking about the first ever homelessness liaison person being hired to work on the ground with individuals without homes in the community. And I'm also really excited about our work session coming up next month on the library and, and interim remodel, hopefully. So looking forward to talking more about that.
Yeah, I'm happy with the language. I think that, you know, one of the things we ended up wanting to do here is to be more specific about what, how, what's in our goals, things that are on our mind and are attainable. And so this does make a good touchstone to see how we follow through, as we just did by dealing with the previous agenda item. That falls right into item number three, improving infrastructure. So we're all off and running, so I think it's great, thanks.
I think the staff did a great job capturing the essence of what we laid out. Language is there. Looks like we have a really good set of goals to find out for us, and, and I think we need to follow through with these as best as we possibly can, so that we can say we accomplished some of these things. And I would note, the goals are, are listed in a random order, so the, the list does not reflect prioritizations, we'll make that clear. They're all equally important. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the vision or goals of the council?
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the city council. I'm here tonight as the Executive Director of the Astoria Warming Center. And as you know, we are coming to the end of our seventh season now here in Astoria, where we give emergency shelter to unhoused individuals during the worst of winter weather. As you also, I'm sure, are aware, Clatsop County has the unfortunate distinction of having one of the highest per capita rates of homelessness in the state. So I just wanted to not only thank the community for all the support that they give us over the years, financial, clothing, bedding, food, and also to thank our incredible staff that does the hard work of caring for, for our guests. But I also wanted to come tonight to support the city council and the staff for their work on these goals coming up on housing and, and, and issues concerning the homeless individuals. So I know it's a lot of work that's involved, particularly with planning, goal changes, code changes, but I, I, we support you, and let us know how, how we can support you even further. We're here to help, and we know that you're part of the solution, and, and we want to support you. So thank you very much. That's all, that's all I had to say tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thanks for what you do at the Warming Center. And we have a raised hand from Mr. Orak.
Hello, I just wanted to take a second to introduce myself. I'm Ozark Orak, former participant and new Executive Director for Filling Empty Bellies, the main volunteer at the Beacon Clubhouse, the IT and maintenance person there as well. I'm also a part-time employee of the Astoria Warming Center. Filling Empty Bellies has been actively working on opening a low barrier drop-in center here in Astoria since 2017, a fact I feel that has been overlooked time and time again by the powers that be, committees, councils.
a fact I feel that has been overlooked time and time again by the powers that be, committees, councils and task forces. A lot of money has been thrown at different projects to try to reinvent what we have already been doing on a grassroots level since 2014. We started reaching out to these different councils and committees, asking for support and offering our knowledge of the situation from our unique position on the ground, only to be ignored with what, what felt like a pat on the head. We all have the same basic goals when it comes to the ever-increasing housing crisis. So I'm asking you to please reach out to those of us out here doing the work so that we can start to make some headway on these issues. Creating another community or job position without any actual clear direction is not going to cut it and only serves to deny organizations such as Filling Empty Bellies the opportunity to procure funds which have been so grossly misappropriated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orak, and I hope that you will, if you're able, from 10 to 12 on the 4th, dial in to the host meeting and participate and give your thoughts and comments.
I will be there, thank you.
Into the definition of the position as it's, as it's evolving and as it starts off in the near future. There's no other comments? Could we have a motion to approve, I'm sorry?
We won't be approving those tonight.
Oh, I thought we were just approving all but the library ones. We'll wait on the whole thing.
Typically, the, well, it's, Mayor, recall, the, the past practice has been to be able to allow the time for the public to be able to, to be able to review these and be able to have discussions with council and then review them at a later time, but.
That's perfectly fine. Let's plan on that then. Okay, that brings us then to our last matter, which is item 8F, the Land Use Board of Appeals remand for appeal, case AP 20-02, Hollander Hospitality.
Because silence means that I'm up. As everyone knows by now, Hollander Hotels' design review approval expired in December of 2020. However, they do have a petition or a motion in to request an extension. That extension was denied by the city council, appealed to Luba, and remanded to the city council. Essentially, what Luba told us is that the city cannot rely on changes to the code that occurred since the permit was granted in denying the application. They told us that we relied on evidence that they felt was not in the record concerning two hotels that proceeded during the pandemic. And they held that the city did not adequately explain the reasons for the denial. At this stage, the city has several choices. They could review the record in full and issue a new opinion. They could hold a brand-new hearing, open up the record completely. Or they could limit the record and take new evidence. And I suggest the third course. My suggestion is that we supplement the record with evidence concerning those two hotels that Luba found our reliance on was deficient. So that there is evidence in the record to support whatever decision you make with respect to the relevance of those hotels. In that hearing, in, in, in doing that, Hollander Hospitality and any other interested party would be able to respond and also admit evidence for that limited purpose, if that's the option you took. The remand requires us to have a new order in place by the end of May. And I would suggest that we have plenty of time to do that. So, and I would, I would suggest that, and recommend that the city reopen the record for that limited purpose and ask staff to produce evidence concerning those two hotels during the relevant period of time. And that relevant period of time would be between December 2018, when Hollander Hospitality first obtained their approval, and June of 2019, when they filed their, their request for an extension agreement. And so we'd have evidence concerning the progress that those two hotels made during that period of time specifically. And if anyone has questions, concerns, I'm happy to answer them.
But, but again, wasn't it June 2020? When the extension was requested?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to double check that.
Right. Yeah, three, three months into the pandemic, which is kind of the, the crux of the matter. So we're not really here tonight to, to talk the, the content of the case, although it's not prohibited to do so if someone wishes to. We're really here to have a process discussion and, and make a process decision on, on how to move forward under the three options that Mr. Henningsguard outlined just now. So any counselor comment and discussion?
Yeah, I think the process Mr. Henningsguard has proposed is, is, is the correct one. And I think if we can gather some additional evidence about the hotels that proceeded and about their funding, I think that would be very useful.
I agree with that.
I agree. I believe that what Mr. Henningsguard has put together for us here, get them to explain specifically, identify specifically why, and then explain what other evidence that they would have for that. So I think we should put staff right to that.
I'd agree, and I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay, please do.
I move that the city reopen the record on extension requests by Hollander Hotels for Design Review DR 18-01R and Historic New Construction Permit NC 18-01 for the limited purpose of receiving evidence identifying other hotels and the progress made by those hotels prior to Hollander's application for an extension.
Second. And before voting, I'll just confirm with Mr. Henningsguard. So that would need to, the decision needs to be made by sometime in May, and we would probably hold this in April. I presume you'd be ready for that in April.
Yeah, so we're, it would, we already have an appeal hearing scheduled that's going to be held on your first meeting in April. So I think the earliest would be the, the second meeting in, in April.
Okay, so second meeting in April or the first in May, I would presume. And, and this would be for evidence from the city, for evidence from the appellant, and it would also be open to public input on this, the narrowly defined topic of the hearing. Okay.
And just for clarification, I assume we could, the, that Mr. Henningsguard said that it had happened before the end of May so that we could, this could go as far in as the second meeting in May. Would that be correct?
Well, I think we'd want to have an order adopted by the second meeting in May so you can complete your deliberations in a couple of weeks in advance to allow staff the opportunity to prepare the necessary findings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries. And we now have new agenda items, 8G, H and I, 8G is regarding the chauffeurs, teamsters and helpers, local 58, Public Works Department Collective Bargaining Agreement.
So over the past month, there have been negotiations between the Teamsters Local 58 and the city with the Public Works Bargaining Unit. This bargaining unit agreed to hold off on negotiations, which had started back last fiscal year until we had a mid-year budget analysis. And that happened and was presented to city council in January. And we then have since had our bargaining sessions. And what is brought for you tonight is a collective bargaining agreement, which includes a retroactive salary increase in, which would be effective, retro July 1st, 2020, a 2% on July 1st, 2021, a 2% increase on July 1st, 2022, a change in stability pay, which is dealing with longevity of employees, which would increase from 5% to 6% after 20 years of service. There are also some changes to the on-call provisions of the contract. And we also made changes to be in compliance with state and federal law, which had changed since the last contract was approved and, and made some cleanup of, of some language throughout the agreement. So this is a contract which the bargaining team is bringing before the city council and is recommending approval. I will note that this has been voted by the Public Works Union already and voted in the affirmative.
Okay, and council has just discussed this during executive session. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this? In case, could we have a motion?
I move that we approve a resolution establishing a basic compensation plan for the employees of the city of Astoria and establishing regulations for the placement of present employees within the wage and salary schedules provided.
So, Counselor, I think if what we can do is, this is, at first, we're needing a motion to approve the contract with the Teamsters Local 58 Public Works and the city of Astoria. And then we'll get to that salary resolution at a later point.
So I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Astoria and the chauffeurs, teamsters and helpers, local 58, for Parks and General Employees.
Public Works. Public Works, not, not Parks. If you could just clarify your motion.
For Public Works, so, yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item 8H is for the Parks Department.
So this is a, again, a contract which has been bargained in a similar fashion between Teamsters Local 58, Parks and General Employees, and the city of Astoria. And as with the prior bargaining unit, there is a 2%, 2%, 2% wage adjustment between July 1st, 2020 and July 1st, 2022. Additionally, the stability pay would be increasing from 5% to 6% after 20 years of service and well as some other changes in the contract to comply with federal and state law and to clarify some elements. And so what we're looking for here is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Teamsters Local 58, Parks and General Employees, and the city of Astoria.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Astoria and local 58, Parks and General Employees.
I'll second that.
Are there any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our last agenda item tonight is 8I, the action regarding the adoption of the salary resolution.
So this is the official document that actually puts into place wage adjustments throughout the city. And whenever there are changes to wages or any positions, those are made through amendments to the city's salary resolution. And so now that we have two collective bargaining agreements approved, we have a salary resolution which memorializes that as well as some other changes which I'll run through with you. So first of all, we have the Parks General Employee Group, and that includes a 2% wage adjustment effective on July 1st, 2020, as specified in the just-approved contract. We also have the Public Works Employee Group with a 2% wage adjustment effective July 1st, 2020, as was just-approved in the other contract. We have a 2% wage adjustment effective July 1st, 2020, per Resolution 15-6 for the fire employee group, fire management, regarding maintenance of equitable compensation for management purposes. The fire chief and deputy fire chief had held off on wage adjustments while they have been approved by council and a salary resolution for the other fire department staff. They had held off until January of this year to be able to allow for financial review to be able to occur. And now that is being brought forward. So similarly, with the police department, deputy chief and police chief, there is a 2% wage adjustment effective July 1st, 2020, per Resolution 21-02 that was approved. And a clarification of that, an original document was approved at your last meeting regarding maintenance of equitable compensation package. And again, the police chief and deputy police chief had held off on wage adjustments while the other staff had been approved earlier in the fiscal year. They had held off until after the, the budget analysis had been completed. And lastly, under the management and confidential employees, those are the remaining non-union employees for the city. The salary resolution includes a 2% wage adjustment effective July 1st, 2020. I would note that the salary resolution does not include a wage adjustment for the city manager. And that is done separately at the time of when the city manager is evaluated for their performance evaluation. That has occurred already for this year. And I, this, this resolution does not include a salary resolution for an increase to the city manager's pay, and, and I'm not looking for one for an increase. So it is recommended that the council adopt the salary resolution as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Estes. Any comments or discussion from the council? Any comments from the public? In that case, could we have a motion, please?
Yes, now that we have approved the contracts for Public Works and for Parks, I move that we approve the salary resolution establishing basic compensation plan and wages adjustments for city employees.
Second. Ann Rokel. Counselor Brownson?
Aye.
Counselor Rocka?
Aye.
Counselor Herman?
Aye.
Counselor Hilton?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the regular agenda. I do have one note to make. Chief Spalding notifies me the host meeting is at 10:30, not 10 o'clock on the 4th. And now we'll open up to new business from the public. If any members of the public wish to speak to the council, please raise your hand if you're present or use the Zoom function, raise hands. I see, I have Andy Davis has his hand up. We'll unmute you and Mr. Davis. State your, well, I already stated your name, but your address, please.
Andy Davis, 376 Third Street in Astoria. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I come before you tonight with the resolution from the Clatsop County Democratic Central Committee, of which I am the chair. I'll summarize the sentiments with full resolution. Will be submitted to you all by email. Our country, land of opportunity and greatness that it is, has a history of unjust treatment and oppression of Black and Indigenous and people of color members of our society. In the pursuit of their civil liberties and fair treatment in the legal system, BIPOC Americans continue to encounter a double standard of justice. Racial inequality persists in many aspects of American life, and it will take hard work and bravery to bring about equality and fairness. Over the past year, we've seen these inequities play out in cities across our country during citizen protests. We perceive that there is still unequal response from law enforcement to groups protesting in favor of Black Lives Matter as compared groups protesting in favor of Black Lives Matter as compared to similar or even more threatening protests from majority-white conservative groups. This was most starkly evident on January 6, when a mob of overwhelmingly white rioters tried to stop the presidential election certification and threaten the lives of lawmakers and staff in the U.S. Capitol, all without sufficiently strong law enforcement response. This mob was not met with the National Guard in full force like Black Lives Matter protesters only months before, even when erecting a hangman's noose on our National Mall or when calling for the hanging of Vice President Pence. Our members see this as evidence that there's still much work to be done to make sure that justice and rights for all Americans are upheld equally. We're calling upon leaders to help us by evaluating public policy and practices for bias and implementing strategies to eliminate discrimination. Mayor Jones, Chief Spalding, City Council, we acknowledge and support your public statements last year and actions within the city and the Astoria Police Department to address these justice issues locally. Especially in a time of setting new goals, we ask that you and the council to continue the active review of policies and informal habits which prolong unequal treatment under the law. We open our door for dialogue and partnership if we can help you in those efforts. Thank you. I'll send the statement your way.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Other public comments? Okay, is there a new business from the council? Okay, and I was expecting you guys might have a statement tonight, but I guess not. Okay, you're just here for the phone.
Yeah, and Mayor, just a reminder that this coming Thursday at 4:30 PM, there is a joint Astoria Development Commission, Port Commission meeting to discuss a waterfront study that the Astoria Development Commission could be looking at organizing and also paying for as a joint project of the Port of Astoria and the Astoria Development Commission. So that'll be a discussion item this coming Thursday with both groups. And what we'll be asking for is a consideration of a request for issuance of a request for qualifications to begin the consultant hiring process.
Great. I know we're all looking forward to that. That's a timely topic, and hopefully it'll really pay dividends in the long run. And with that, thank you all for attending tonight. We are adjourned.